...hotel damaged by fire. Front yard setback from Bailey Walk for proposed shed, existing warning, existing deck around ice cream shop. Heightened areas for proposed 12-foot-high fence located in the front yard on Bailey Walk. Front yard setback from Bailey Walk and Cherry Grove Walk for existing deck with steps and neighbors. Front yard setback areas from Cherry Grove Walk for two existing decks, two walks, plastic roof over deck and shed. Permission for 6-foot-high wood wall, deck, retail building. Permission for 6-foot-high concrete wall. Permission for existing wood walls bearing in height from 3 to 6 feet high located in the front yards on South Walk and East Walk. Also permission to exclude the 50% lot occupancy permitted, 91.28%.
Welcome. You are setting up the record to reflect that the board's plan or read this application and provide certain comments of the board as the president can testify as to his comments.
Properties located on the southeast corner of Bailey Walk and Holly Walk and Hamlet Town Road. The properties approved with the one-story frame building, two retail buildings, swimming pool and multiple sheds and decks which are to remain on premises. The applicant is also intending to reconstruct a two-story hotel which succumbed to fire damage in March 2015. The relief as requested as previously read by Ms. Ricardi. The parcels within the Great South Beach and Fire Island National Seashore. It is noted that Section 85 verse 77(c)(2) of the Town Code states that a legal nonperforming use is discontinued by virtue of fire, explosion, accident, or other causes. To the extent of not more than 75% of the total use shall not be deemed to have lost its legal nonperforming use status. Reconstruction and restoration of said use where discontinued to more than 75% of the total use shall be determined by the following guidelines of which include the following: Those legal nonperforming uses established prior to October 17, 1984 shall be reconstructed in accordance with the building's dimensions as stated in this article. It is noted that a certificate of existing use 5348 is on file for a one- and two-story hotel 171 foot by 123 feet with decks as per survey dated January 30, 1974. And the proposed building appears to be slightly larger than the one which come to the fire. While a certain increase in area may be appropriate due to building mechanicals and fire safety, clarification by the applicant is recommended as to the former and current hotel size. It is noted that the board is only appealed similarly for fire damage commercial buildings in Fire Island Pines. In an application known as Danakee, case number 11 of January 11, 2012, the board granted relief for the reconstruction of a commercial building requiring dimensional relief as well as 98.8% lot occupancy relief. An application known as FIP Ventures, case number 33 of January 25, 2012, the board granted permission for the reconstruction of the commercial building requiring front, rear, minimum and total saw yard relief and 95.8% lot occupancy relief. And in its findings and conclusions in the FIP Ventures case, the board concluded that the multiple request for setback relief and lot coverage of 95.8% is within the nature and character of the commercial properties in the finance community. Affordable alternatives do not exist despite the substantial nature of the relief requested. And while safe and all self-created, no adverse physical and environmental effects are anticipated. The findings in fact also made reference to the uniqueness of the application in terms of the few commercial properties in that the neighborhood and the benefit to the economy and real estate values and the fact that it would not create a precedent for residents with certain properties. Request for lot occupancy significant at 91.2% and a certificate of compliance 25535 is on file for the 16-by-24-foot shed southeast corner, an 8-foot-by-12-foot shed and 22-by-52-foot deck and fencing. So while permission to rebuild the hotel may be appropriate, the applicant also seeks numerous relief for decks, sheds and fencing which do not appear to have any association with the fire and some of which were constructed without appropriate permits. These amenities likely contribute to the significant lot occupancy relief. The property is within 150 feet of the Great South Bay and as such, the application will likely be subject to permits from the Temple Haven Department of Environmental Protection under Chapter 81 Wetlands and Borderways. And as per State Environmental Quality Review Act, the application is a type 2 action and should the board look favorably, no mitigation measures are recommended.
So for the record, those were the comments of the board's planner, Christopher Reed. Ms. Russo, how do we proceed?
Mr. Chairman, and for the board for the record, my name is Sarah Brusell. I'm with the law firm of Van Roche S&amp;P Act in Brussels with offices at 140 Main Street, State of New York, 11782. We're here today representing the applicant and property owner, Road Realty Enterprises Inc., at 70 West Avenue, Patro, New York, 11772. As stated in the call, the property is on the southeast corner of Bailey Walk and Holly Walk, west side, Cherry Grove Walk and East Walk and north side, South Walk and Cherry Grove. Tax lots that were indicated in the call in the meeting are correct in that there are tax lots 296.2-3 and the lots involved are five in total, 34.2, 35, 45, 46.1, and 47. The applicant has stated is seeking to rebuild the landmark hotel in the center of the Cherry Grove Community Downtown Commercial District which was destroyed last year by fire on March 27 of 2015. The request, however, to begin, I would like to seek to amend the application for lot occupancy. As stated in the call of the meeting, I believe the call as noted is 91.28%. What I prepared and given to each of the members of the board is a new survey that we had updated as of January 27, 2016. It had not been submitted to the zoning board office or to the building department because in discussion it was best since advertising they'd already commenced for this application that we should bring it to the board here and seek to reduce the lot occupancy from what it was proposed to what it is reduced to as shown on the survey of John Mayer which I provided you to. And the lot occupancy at this point then would be reduced as stated to 54.7. The reason that that is done is by adding all of the tax lots in total, the lot occupancy was originally calculated just on that portion which the structure of the situation. However, the Health Department application for it is situated on tax lots as you can see from the surveys I've provided you on 34.2, 45, and 35 which are diagonally to the south of the subject property. In addition, when you look at areas that the board has of its own record, you will see that the tax lot 47 is a sandlot and that's where as people will come possibly speak in favor of the application, indicative volatile tournaments occur and they're all owned by the applicant and controlled by the applicant. As such, by bringing forward this new survey including all of the lots, we reduce the lot occupancy as I indicated to you to 54.7. So I'd like to ask for motion from the board to reduce the call to that lot occupancy as shown on your survey. I would like to point out that the documents that I provided you were a copy of this. It also gave you, although as a candidate, I'm not trying to present any additional new documents today, I'm just referring to documents you have in your file or the building department has on file. There are building elevations that I gave you along with floor plans for the building which show the size of the building which will help the board members look at it in terms of any questions they may have either from Chris Reed's report or from the Fire Island National Seashore report.
Well, I am going to amend it as requested. Let me ask you with regard to the other tax lots, and we're not talking about 46.1 where the structures exist, but rather the areas where the stuff they feel is 34.2, 35, 45 and the area of the sand, the volatile area, that's tax lot 47. Are those now included in the entire lot area?
Yes, if you read your call of the meeting, your call of the meeting had them included. We have them included except the survey that we will provide and only showed 46.1 because it was calculated only in the way six foot or four. Correct, which is how the building department saw it. So we'll be asking revised the survey to reflect what was in your call and provide it to you today and that's why we're asking you.
Does the applicant go with the Enterprises Inc.? He showed the, even those large numbers that we just...
He has the controlling interest in each of the respective lots, yes. And he can, in terms of the choose.
And we see this new certified survey certified to Frank Legori and Real Estate Happy Days LLC in addition to Grove Realty. Are those owners?
The owners are what I indicated to you which is Grove Realty Enterprises Inc. and there are three other owners, three other entities, but they're all controlled or managed by Dr. Frank Legori who is the property owner. Those are Grove, Cherry Grove Hotel Owners Inc., Grove Realty Enterprises Inc., and then the other entity that I indicated which is Grove Realty Associates. So they're all of which either Dr. Legori is the president or the managing partner and has the controlling interest in order to present this application.
So as counsel for the applicant, are we meant to believe that you have a sense of knowledge of these other owner entities to include these lots in with this application today?
Yes, and I spoke to Dr. Legori about that and he has agreed to include them which is why we presented the survey.
All right, then this board have a motion to amend the application to reduce the lot coverage request of 91.28% to the 54.7% as indicated on applicant's revised survey as dated January 27, 2016. So, what's your thoughts, Mr. Reed, in terms of wisdom while in favor? Any opposed motion checks? Then on the amended application, Ms. Russo, you have a number of other parcels included. The lot coverage is much less severe, the request was original severe than previously was. How did you want to proceed with this application?
All, what I wanted to point out to you is the file that I gave you shows a series of 110 photographs. The 110 photographs are of the subject premises. I provided an index for the board so that it makes it easier to facilitate viewing the documents so that they're not clear. I did not want to violate the board's policy of not providing necessary documents in advance. So the photographs are those items which are the subject of the application as are presented by all other applicants who come through the board. What the photographs reveal is that approximately, I think it is, and I'm looking for my index, 54 of the photographs are at the subject premises. And then the breakdown from there shows prior to the fire of March 27, 2015, also after the fire of March 27, 2015. And then it shows you photographs of all of the properties, excuse me, all of the properties that surround the subject premises and other commercial district properties throughout Cherry Grove. As this board is aware, in 1981, the town adopted the Great South Bay Fire Island's zoning code of which I was assistant and town attorney helping to write that document. And there are either two zoning categories here. And this subject category for this particular property is CD Commercial District. As CD Commercial District, all of the structures that are situated there have either gotten and there is a series of that you already have received prior to and with the filing of the application, seven COs or certificates of compliance. There is certificate of compliance 281605 from October 19, 2015 for demolition of the fire damage. There's certificate of compliance 266273 in February 19, 13 for repair of fire damage of another fire that took place on premises. There's CO 218630 of September of 2002 for a flower shop. There's a CO number 125542 of December 23, 85 for repairs for the pizzeria restaurant at the premises. There's a certificate of compliance 125536 from December 20, 85 for utility sheds and decking and fencing on the premises. There's a letter of correction for CPU number 5348 from December 20, 85 that relates to the same. And there's a CPU number 5348 from November 18 to 74 which talks about the structures on site which are the one and two-story hotel, then they describe the other buildings, the two-story hotel of 171.6 by 121.3 and the decking as well as a one-story 14 by 22 and one by two-story 45 by 53, your regular structure as such. You have these on file. These are a matter of public record. We filed them with the application. I didn't provide them for you, but I'm indicating to you what's there. What we've also accomplished, and unless you want me to hand up another copy for anyone to review, I have them. What we accomplished was through the efforts of Ms. Trolley, we filed a certificate of existing use for the property which the building department has agreed is accurate which indicates that there are three storage sheds on site, that there are 10 areas decking on site matching the survey she provided, that there is the swimming pool which has been in the center of the hotel and been there since the beginning of time, and there are the hotel bar, pizza shop, beach shop, and the ice cream shop, all of which the building department has agreed if the zoning board grants the area of areas is requested today, will be issuing a certificate of existing use for those structures as shown on the survey. In addition, they gave a letter to Ms. Trolley which you should have a copy of by email indicating those items that are covered by the CPU and those items which have to come here for various relief. Those are the things that are listed in the call of the meeting and that's what has been put forward today.
Eric, did CEO get CEO? You submit that as part of this package because I didn't see that.
No, I didn't because it was already submitted to Ms. Ricardi when we filed, but if you want a copy of all ones I referenced, I might have here...
Which I have here, I have some COs, but I'm not sure that I have that one.
That one is the last one and it's the one I referenced and there's a copy. So the documents, I believe they should have been in your files. If they're not, I've given you that if you want the affidavits, we have them as duplicate set if you don't have them in your file.
You have the survey that's referenced?
I do not have that with me. That is with the building department.
Oh, that's a 74 survey.
I do not have that with me today. But I know we've compiled the building department because the application for the certificate of existing use matches that and I have the two affidavits that went with that if you want copies of those. I can give you the two affidavits, I don't have that survey. Now, to the best of my knowledge, there were, there was, as you can see from the CO, a prior application to this board, your predecessors in 1985, which was granted based on the numbers that you're seeing on the COs. And as far as the property itself, it's on town-owned, town-maintained, town-dedicated improved, in your case here, not roadways but walkways which are all covered by the town highway department for maintenance and repair. There is Health Department approval for this particular application in that the existing sanitary that you're seeing on the survey has already been in existence and servicing the property as part of this application because we have new construction. Myself, Mr. Breslin, who was our real estate expert who was to attend today, but unfortunately last evening he had a hard episode, so we graciously have pitch hitter as of 10 o'clock this morning, Mr. Walsh, Michael Walsh will be our expert. I'm sorry, Mr. Lynch will be our expert today and helping with the presentation, reviewing my notes and those of Mr. Breslin's. And in addition, what I wanted to point out to you is that we have public order here at this location and the application we have submitted as a February 17 and required for recertification of the sanitary system for everything that's on site and everything that's proposed. No decision has been made, but we anticipate based on our meetings and discussions with the Health Department that we will have Health Department approval for the premises due to the recertification. We visited the site on January 28 to take the photographs that you see and also to check out the sanitary system in the early part of this year. As far as the application, we affirm that there are all of the statements that we put on the zoning board application for items 1 through 10. And we also support and are not in disagreement with the denials of the building department as presented in the call of the meeting. Ms. Trolley, the Trolley application on Michelle's permit service is with us and available today as well as the project architect, Robert Gruber, who designed those documents that you see and I gave you which was the building elevation and the floor plans for the building. I would like to just take a minute and share with you about that because it addresses some of the statements that Mr. Reed stated in his arguments about the application. First of all, I want to share with you that the original building which was known as the Cherry Grove Hotel was first built in 1895. And being constructed in 1895, it was offset off of the bed. It was offset approximately 300 feet off of the bed which would put it in the proximity of the location of where it is today. However, at that time, the hotel itself was constructed parallel to the bed unlike the way it's situated today which is proposed as vertical to the bed. Back in 1959, there was a fire that destroyed the hotel for the first time. That fire then caused the hotel to be rebuilt in 1959 and then it was rebuilt vertical to the bed in the fashion that is being proposed today. You ask how do I know this? I have here a copy of a book that I was received from my client. It is known as Cherry Grove Fire Island: 60 Years in America's First Gay and Lesbian Town. It is a book written by and published by Beacon, Beacon Press in Boston and it is and was written as an anthropology. Now, I can't give you the book because to make it part of the record, it's my only copy. However, if the board seeks to purchase it, you can get it at Born to Noble for a total of $14 and you can make it part of the record and you can read the history with photographs going back and forward because given the fees that we've paid for cutting here today, I think that would be something that would be appropriate if the board is curious about finding about the history here in Cherry Grove. But if anybody wants to peruse it and wants to look at it through the hearing but it needs to be returned to me, I'd be happy to pass it up if that would be the case at this time.
I don't think you can only because it is not going to become part of our...
Unless you wish to somehow acquire it, that's where I would leave it. That being said, our existing hotel that was destroyed by the fire was consistent of 64 units. The proposed new structure again will be 64 units. However, of the 64 units, two of the units, one will be as a utility room on this structure. The second will be used for the staff resident manager. So there will be 64 units again, however, it's not for rental. It will be one for management, one for utility. The total being the same number. That being said, as you can see from the photographs, there were balconies on each side that ran the length of the proposed building both on the west and on the east side. Under the proposed structure in the elevations that I have given you, there are individual balconies per room. There is no running balcony along the east or west side on the first or second story. That being said, each of the new individual balconies go to rooms that are slightly larger by about 10 feet in size. And that was done so that they would be compliant with the current New York State Fire and Building Codes and handicapped accessible requirements that are now part of today's 2016 zoning code. There is also in this for fire safety purposes, a 950 square foot by two floors, total of 1,900 square feet for the building as a central part so that you can come out of the rooms, go into the rooms, and exit on the north and south sides of the building. The old building structure, when you look at the surveys that were provided and submitted with the application, were 177 by 47 feet for a total of 9,000, I'm sorry, for a total of 8,319 square feet per floor which would total approximately 16,638 for the total footprint of the building. The new square footage is 9,024 square feet per floor for a total of building size 192 by 47 which has approximately 18,048 square feet. The difference in answer to Mr. Reed's questions is 1,385 square feet. It was also, there are added onto this for fire access purposes stairways and exit entrances on the northern side, but they were not considered part of nor did they exist on the old building. So I trust that that would answer his questions about the building size and why you're here for that particular size unless you have a question.
Just to be real quick, 13 hundred square feet that you just mentioned is on both, total for both floors.
Total for both floors.
So the footprint increases by about 600, 600 square.
Correct, okay. That being said, I know that there were a plethora of letters of support that came in, cannot include them in the file here because I'm certain that you would not want me to read through them and I'm sure Ms. Ricardi would be adding them to the hearing. And I have seen copies because her office and Mr. Baker were kind enough to provide me copies of say.
Ms. Russo, those letters continue to come in. We're at 39, but they actually are still coming into the office.
Okay. The only one that you don't have that came to me was hand deliver to my office is one from the state of the state of Ferry Service. Do you know if you received that?
We don't have that, but we have Cherry Grove Chamber of Commerce which we intend to read in addition to National Seashore.
I'm going to hand up one that was delivered to my office at about 1:00 today from the state of Ferry Company. There are seven copies for each of the board members and I have my copy here. And it basically is supporting and talks about, and cannot stress enough, the economic hardship and need for this particular hotel to continue. And I would urge you to read that along with the others that you have. That being said, at this time, I want to just point out to you that the financial interest in the reconstruction, people have questioned me and I've only been involved in the application since January, as to what has been with the way, why have we not gotten here, why have we not reconstructed a hotel that smacked in the center of the firing community that's the lifeblood and economic vitality of the community for some of the people who come here from New York City and parts all over the world? That being said, what has happened is there was a battle with the insurance company because as you know, water is turned off at this particular location mid-fire out for fear of freezing pipes. From the period of October to March, the water gets turned back on and the different entities that have, and the homes over there wind up getting connected and the water comes back on. Well, there's an insurance claim that they are presently trying to battle as to whether or not the insurance company is going to support this particular reconstruction and whether there will be reiteration to the property owner for the reconstruction. That was one issue. The second issue is the applicant applying to the Brookhamtown Industrial Development Agency. The IDA in July of last year, upon reviewing the application, indicated that they would support and help because of the tourism and because of the economics involved, would support the application here as it relates to the redevelopment of this. In addition, we have made application because we were hopeful that we would get insurance monies to cover the cost of reconstruction, we've made applications to various lending institutions. One has denied our request, but we're exploring the applications with three others. That being said, the Health Department also had to be made application, but we had problems and issues in dealing with our surveyor so that the architect had completely necessary plans. So Environmental Protection came in and they made their comments. New York State DEC does not require anything because this structure is south of the bulkhead. And as this board is familiar and I represented the Cherry Grove Community Association, the bulkhead is on the other side of that particular location. I also represented the restaurant owned by Dines where they have bulkhead. I represented Sunset on the Bay and the Fire Island, Cherry Grove Fire District. So all of those are situated on the bank. New York State DEC does not have jurisdiction based on the bulkhead and thus we are only confronted with the Town, Brooklyn, and Environmental Protection. We've seen the letter for a compliance. If this board grants the application, we will get and be able to secure a weapons permit from the Town of Brooklyn. So everything is poised waiting for this day to come. And now that we're here, we have with the assistance of Mr. Lynch, the opportunity to be able to lay out for you the elements of 267B as it relates to area variances. And if you have any other questions from either Ms. Trolley, Mr. Gruber, or myself, we will be able to go from there. I know in the reading of Mr. Reed's presentation, he referenced your decisions that related to Fire Island. to Fire Island Pines and the two commercial properties that are right there on the harbor, similar in kind to this being the lifeblood of the community, where you granted excessive lot occupancy in the face of the, and also setback issues in the face of the seashore comments that were put forward. I've read the seashore comments, so I'm certain you're going to read into the record. But as you indicated and heard from that letter, we are talking about combining additional lots, we're talking about development rights that the Health Department will control in terms of sanitary development, and we don't have the final answer there, but we anticipate that they will approve that. I have four or five other decisions which we handed up, as in the case of the staff residents or the residents of the multifamily house involved in the Fire Island Hotel. I have them if you want them again for the record. If not, I know you'll take notice of them, and there were a total of five, but I gave that a time. That being said, I would like to proceed then with testimony of Mr. Lynch.
Maybe before we move to Mr. Lynch's testimony, Mr. Russo, just bear with me a second, just for some housekeeping issues. Folks, there are a number of you here, a lot of you are here for this application, we recognize that, but it is roughly 4:20, coming up 4:30 or so. This is not the last case, but one before. So we have one other occasion at 2:00 until the calendar. I understand that the next date, the times calendar was 4:00 PM, and we obviously are a bit behind today in the public hearings. This application will continue to take some time. I don't expect the next one will. The board will break for approximately 10 or 15 minutes between the two. I apologize for the delay in hearing you speak and for making it wait for your application to be heard. I just wanted to give you a heads up as to where we were, and to anticipate that while we may have another 30 or 40 minutes of hearing following that, we will take 45 minutes. I expect 4:00 until the calendar to be delayed at least approximately an hour before we begin again. So I apologize again for the inconvenience, and thank you for your patience. Let me have you continue then, Mr. Russo.
What I presented you with while you were advising the public is a copy of Mr. Lynch's credentials and resume. This, Mr. Lynch has appeared before this board on several other occasions, several other applications, either with myself or other counsel. And I'm asking you to accept and recognize him as an expert witness as to zoning and real estate matters.
We have the new houses, Russo, we will have this application.
Yes, thank you. That being said, and I'm going to ask Mr. Lynch to review for you the elements of 267B as it relates to area variances and the five factors that this board considers as it relates to an application of this type and the variance relating to our seeking.
Certainly. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Michael Lynch. This is addressed 15 Dixie Street, like to New York. As Mr. Russo indicated, I have appeared many times before this board in the past. I'm here on the application for the rebuilding of the Cherry Grove Beach Hotel, which is a board's aware as a landmark structure in the Cherry Grove community that was originally constructed back in the late 1800s, then destroyed in 1959 and rebuilt in a different configuration. And of course, we had the devastating fire approximately a year ago today. And so the application today is to rebuild that landmark hotel. And at this point, I will go through my description of the property briefly. Mr. Russo certainly did a comprehensive description of the property and the surrounding area. The building itself and the property is situated at the southeast corners of Bayview and Holly Walks in the Cherry Grove community. The overall lot area is approximately 62,000 square feet, as Mr. Russo described. We're now adding, I believe it's three tax lots, four tax lots, which substantially almost halves the lot area coverage that we're seeking. Originally 91.28%, and now we're down to 54.8%. The application involves a number of area variances for existing conditions, for decking, for sheds, and fencing. The main part of the application is for, again, the rebuilding of the landmark hotel. The originally, prior to the fire, contained 16,638 square feet, two levels of area, approximately 8,319 square feet of footprint. We're now proposing an increase overall of approximately 1,385 square feet, or just under 700 square feet per floor of overall area, represents roughly an 8% increase in the overall size of the building. It's in the center of the heart of the commercial district of Cherry Grove. It's just to the south of the community center, the Cherry Grove Fire Department, the Ferry Service, the Island Breeze Restaurant. To the west of it was additional devastation of other properties. There was an eight-unit apartment building that was destroyed, in addition to two residences. To the west, to the east of it is a real estate office and other condos, as are additional buildings to the south condominium structures. Again, it was a landmark structure. It's had a devastating effect to the community, not only to the occupancy and the revenue loss to the property owner, but not only, in addition to the occupancy of the Cherry Grove community as a whole. Certainly, the tourism has been greatly affected, as well as the trickle-down effect of the loss in visitors and tourism to the community. So that, I'd like to go through the five standards of 267B. One is to whether an undesirable change would be created in the character of the neighborhood or to nearby properties in terms of adverse effect to property values. Certainly, it's quite the opposite in this instance. We'll be rebuilding a landmark structure, looking to restore the character of the downtown commercial district of Cherry Grove. Certainly, it will only help to positively affect property values, given that the structure was such a prominent part of the downtown commercial district of Cherry Grove. So certainly, in terms of standard one, it will only greatly be a positive, too, in terms of the area character and property values.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to point out, and to you as well as the members of the board, in the total of the photographs that you see, 110 of them, and you look at the ones that are listed there, both before and after, there's two prior to the fire that show what was going on at the premises, and then there are three post-fire, and then there's 57 of the subject. And when I was there on January 28th, I mean, when Mr. Lynch refers to the devastation, there's just this huge void in the middle of the residential community, which you do not see in any other Fire Island community that's gone on there. And Mr. Burson or whoever has the binder, you can clearly see that. And if you look at the aerial that we obtained from the towns.
The board has aerials.
There are two areas, one of the fire and one of the before and after, which I'll just guess out in case you don't have it with you today. So you get that. Mr. Lynch, can you continue?
In terms of the substantiality of the application, again, we're looking to roughly at 700, just under 700 square feet of area to the both floors of the hotel. So the application, in terms of the substantiality of the variance, again, many of the variances are existing conditions, and in terms of the new variances with respect to the rebuilding of the hotel, we're adding roughly 8% of overall area, or just under 700 square feet of footprint to the area. So I don't believe that it's a substantial request. Would it have any adverse effect, impact on the physical and environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district? Certainly not. Again, we're going to be rebuilding a site that's currently blinded due to the devastating fire from a year ago. Whether or not the alleged difficulty was self-created, again, it was obviously due to the fire. And lastly, whether, it's not substantial. Yeah, there is no physical alternative. We need these variances in order to rebuild and restore the hotel to its former glory, which is, again, a landmark structure in the downtown commercial district of Cherry Grove. And at this point, I could answer any questions.
Mr. Lynch, let me just clarify one or two other points. As far as the adverse effect or impact on physical conditions in the neighborhood, the topography of the land is flat.
Yes.
And so there are physical issues here based on the photographs and based on your understanding of the property.
That's correct.
And in addition, as far as environmental, we are not experiencing any environmental conditions, correct?
Correct.
Because we have Health Department, we have wetlands, and we have public water.
Correct.
And so then, it's in your opinion that what we are seeking to do will preserve, protect the character of the neighborhood and the health, safety, and welfare of the community and nearby properties, and yet, the relief we're seeking is that minimum and necessary in order to recreate the structure as destroyed by fire on March 27, 2015?
That's correct, Mr. Russo.
Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Lynch, I would like you to do that as a direct, as opposed to a leading question, but we're this far into a hearing, and we have a lot of people behind you, so giving Mr. Russo some leeway. Those are your opinions, though, really, not?
Absolutely.
Questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Brooks.
Eric, I have got a sort of narrative question. The CO for '74, it's referenced, it references the 1974 survey, speaks about a building 171 plus or minus by 121. There's no building on the survey that we have that's close to that. Is that, were those buildings, the two buildings, the two main buildings essentially combined initially, or is that just general reference in the CO to the way the structure laid out there?
In order to answer your question, I think you also need to take a look when I referenced it in the discussion of the COs. To the best of my knowledge, the original structure was 177 by 47 of the hotel. The additional structure was the other buildings that are on the property, and there was also a letter of correction that was issued to the 1974 CO that I gave you. That was the certificate of existing use, 5348, November 18th, '74, that you're referencing. The document, I bring it back, the COs that I gave you, the next document that the building division came up with was a letter of correction.
Correction, I have that.
Which is now, I don't have building records or the survey, but to my understanding, this appears to be?
The letter of correction from January 8th, '91, references the hotel 171.6 by 121.3.
Correct.
So I'm just going to clarify here. We have, with careful.
I can give you this survey that I have here of September 24, '84, which is this. Right? Can I give them this? So I can provide you with the survey that Mr. Potley obtained, and this may be very clarifying your question. This particular survey that we have, we put a date on it. I will pass it up to you. It says on the survey document, 1974 in the bottom, it's unfortunately curled over, and then I have a copy being before. I'll give you both. We can get a copy back from you on this. This was provided, I guess, from Potley obtained from the building board. If they go with those documents that I gave you.
I do know you can hand it directly to this person.
Okay. So, thank you.
So this is the structure. Yeah. But. Eric, survey that you submitted, '74, or this, feels that the structure initially was, essentially, was portioned shape connected, where it has at least, as a con of the fire, it was not, the structures had been separated at some point.
Correct. And as you referenced it when I pointed it out to you, in February 19 of '13, there was repair, fire damage previously at the site.
Correct.
And that was a breezeway connection between the buildings. So, you know, the building records are sketchy at best, and I'm trying to provide you the best.
No, let me see that. I'm just trying to clarify for the record how the existing building that has to be, that needs to be reconstructed, of 171, 190, maybe 190. But goes from 121 feet to 45 feet, or whatever it currently needs to be. With respect to the increase in square footage, going back to the fact that at some point the buildings were split, the building was split, the increase is as to the portion that burned down, and the portion, I guess it's the west, the western building. What, could you just identify either one of you, again, the specific reasons why the additional square footage has to be or should be added, or is necessary for the appropriate reconstruction of the hotel?
The information that I have received in looking over the documents, we had 64 units, we're creating 64 units. As evidenced through photographs, there were balconies that ran the length of the building from north to south on both the east and west side. Under the new construction, what they have created is a central hall in the building.
There was no center hall.
There was no center hall. The way you accessed the 64 rooms previously was you went up the stairs north and the south, and you walked on the balcony, as you can see from the photographs, and entered your room off of the balcony. So if you were on the west side, you were looking over the residences. If you were on the east side, you were looking over the pool. Now, under the new construction, you still have 64 units, but of the 64 units, two of the units, one is utility room, one is the manager's office, the resident manager that will be running the facility. Of those units, they increased the size by approximately 10 square feet per unit, and in increasing it 10 square feet per unit for the total number of units, they were doing it based on New York State Fire and Building Codes, so that they had a center hallway so that people could exit more quickly and without incident or fire or other issues.
Show combination of the size of the units and the creation of the center hall, insensitively increased size of the building.
Correct. And of that, as I indicated, the prior building size was 16,663. The new building size is 18,48, based on the square footage, but as you correctly pointed out in dividing it out, it's an absolute total of approximately 69, 692.5 square feet per floor.
Per floor.
Okay, of the total building that's being proposed. And the building is sort of now pushed more to the north than it was to the south in terms of the survey that you're looking at.
Okay, so I have that survey that you submitted, and I think it's been redated January 27, 2016.
Correct. And I also gave you a building elevation, and I gave you a floor plan.
Yes, I know. Okay, so just going through Mr. Reed's report in terms of the list of the variances requested. I just want to be able to make sure that I understand where on the new survey, you also, but the new survey, each specific, which variants it contains.
I can help you with that, because the way it was handled by the building department, there was a survey provided, and Mr. Fairhauser wrote this denial, and you had a copy of that, and then I put it in a book, and he started on one corner of the property and worked his way around the entire perimeter of the property and listed all of what he determined to be the variances that were required.
Humor me. Just give me five minutes, and we can go through this.
No problem.
So the first one is the front yard, the Bayview Walk. Now, I'm looking at it, and I'm looking through a five-yard front yard on the Bayview Walk, and I'm having difficulty.
Bear with me one second. Michelle filed this, so I'm putting as Michelle to try and assist you with this. Well, there are technical, I'm just, well, Michelle, let's get, well, let's have this for Charlie. Could you state your name and address for the record?
Michelle Potley, 255 Beaverman Avenue, East Hatch House.
And your occupation?
Permit expert.
For?
For road realty.
And your permit service name?
Michelle's permit service.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Russo, so before we get into Michelle's response, we looked at the hatchmarked area of the person, and we looked at the distance between the end of the hatchmarked area and Holly Walk.
Is that the shade that's being removed, or is that? Is that the shed that's being removed, or is that the...
Um, I'm not quite sure.
You're referring to a shed at the corner of Bayview Walk.
Uh, the shed, yes. That's being removed. There's a...
Is that where the fire foot setback is going?
Bear with me a moment. I'm gonna get out my color code, and so we can go on the same page.
I believe the setback to Bayview is 4.7, but you have been referring to this five.
Okay. Mr. Fairhauser, there's a proposed shed is going to the northwest corner. It's proposed, but it's not there. That, the old shed is further than five. So if you start in the northwest corner, right, and go around. And that should be the fence that's on the north side.
Well, no, wait.
I'm gonna go step by step for all this denial, so you can see.
Could you just clarify for me where the five is?
Say that, where the five what?
Five foot setback.
Five foot setback?
It says five foot proposed, going from four to five.
Mr. Brooks, can I just clarify? You are operating off of Chris Reed's document, or are you operating off of the denial of the building department?
I'm operating off of Chris's document.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's a bit different. All right. Front end setback, Bayview, five feet proposed.
Here's the problem, Mr. Brooks. The problem is that we have the denial from the building division. And we're not clear where Mr. Reed came up with these dimensions. We know what the building department did, and we know how to reference it as it goes around the survey.
Let me, let me explain then what Mr. Reed did, if you will. If you look at the original survey that you handed in with his application, it showed us the distance from this proposed covered roof area to Bayview at 4.7. So Mr. Reed called that as five feet. They also shared which, which part of the survey are you? Let me circle for you. And it's very close to the northwest corner.
The shed has zero from the...
And then they also shared a five foot setback to the building to Holly Walk. So Mr. Reed didn't pull these out of the air. They're clearly on, clearly on.
Can I, unfortunately?
Okay. I see the Holly Walk, and that's easy.
That's easy, that's five feet. I don't know, everything is zero on, thank you. So I don't know where the five foot proposed is.
Okay. You're saying that the denial is actually four foot seven?
That's, that's the width of the shed, not the distance to the seven.
Is it that corner that we're talking about, and it's five feet off of Bay?
No, it's zero. The shed is zero off of Bay.
No, no, you setback, you're asking for the...
No, that is a 4.7 foot shed width.
If you're looking at the survey that you're referencing that you've been chance to circle, the framed shed indicates that it's 4.7 by 45 feet. You see that? If you follow it along.
Holding a zero setback.
With a zero setback. Correct. And that's why if you follow, if you're not following that and follow the denial that the building division gave you, you have zero setback. That's why what we're saying is there may have been a misinterpretation of the dimensions on this survey in order to come to what is written in the report. And this report we got on Monday, it was written on the 19th, which was Friday. And in looking at it, what I decided to follow was the denial that we got from the building and addressed the comments that Mr. Reed asked us to be more specific about. Because I couldn't identify what he was citing in the first seven lines of his variants.
Okay. So that's really confusing. All right. So let me just jump to a few other items that I have questions back. The 12-foot high fence, my floor.
The 12-foot high fence.
We have no confusion about that.
What?
No confusion about that.
No confusion about that. That runs, the 12-foot high fence runs from the corner of Holly Walk along and down Bayview Walk by following the survey document that you have, and ends and starts to taper where the 25 appears on the survey, and then tapers down to four feet to three feet. So from the point where it says, uh, where the stairs are here in the far right corner, that's all. And you can see in the photographs, we presented three feet, and it goes to the one, and it still now starts to escalate upwards and goes further along, and then becomes 12 feet from the point at which you see it says the wall going all the way to the end of Holly Walk, and then has returned on the building that's being proposed. And then that was not destroyed by fire. That is there.
But you're asking, is the legality of that?
Well, the issue is that we've had questions and disagreement with the building department. We proposed to keep it as part of the CEU application. However, Mr. Bonstine's denial came back and said, based on what he can see, based on aerials and documents he had, he wasn't clear that that was there or that it existed prior to 1981. To the best of my knowledge, there are people here in the audience who are familiar with the property for 35 years, and to the best of their information that we've learned, that wall was there as a sound barrier to the north to allow the restaurants and others to be able to continue to operate. But it's part of the relief being asked for today.
If not before 1981, substantially back to the 80s, that move.
Correct.
And that's your understanding based upon your conversations with many of the people who are here today?
Correct.
For this application?
Correct.
Now, tell to me about the six-foot-high wood and concrete walls.
I'm sorry?
The six-foot-high wood and concrete walls.
The six-foot-high wooden concrete walls?
That is on the east side, on East Walk. There is between the framed shed and the, okay, the 16.6 by 24 Ford shed, and the, what dimension on that one? And the 78 by 10-1 shed, there's a wall.
Okay. So whose property is to the, I guess that's the east of, and to the north to the sanitary field, to the east of East Walk?
That is the, um, no, that's the, the, um, no, it's not condos, it's the, um...
He's asking about this. Condom inn?
No, they're not condos. They're, um, I'm sorry. They're not time shares, they're not condos. They are co-ops, okay? And the property that is north of the co-ops is property that's owned and used as a real estate office and a grocery store with an apartment above that's owned by William Underwood and family.
And commercial, it's commercial?
Commercial. Everything to the east, as you can see in the photographs, is commercial. When you look at the aerial that we have provided you with, when you come off the town道, which is how you access in the photographs, ferry that's there, you have on the right side heading south, Island Grease. On the left side, you have Top of the Bay. Island Grease is a restaurant which is board, we appeared before. Probably 20 years ago, I did the application because it was destroyed by fire. We reconstructed that. Top of the Bay is a restaurant on the second floor, and on the first floor, on the bottom, it's all retail stores. When you continue down between Island Grease and Top of the Bay, the first building you come to on the left is the real estate office and grocery store with the apartment above, followed by the co-ops, followed by what is our client's property, where the sanitary field is, followed by the Monster, which is a restaurant that is closed, and then more condominiums.
Okay. So can it, would it be, would I be correctly assuming that the Underwoods are, or property owner, are in support of this application?
Well, interestingly enough.
Yeah, I see the judge here.
The property owners are to my right in the first row, and I can think of...
I assume you've spoken to the judge before, and you can convey to me whether or not they're here to support the application in the sense that the six-foot wall is opposite their property.
I think what you will find is that they're in support of the application, and what you will also have gotten in letters from the Cherry Grove Community Association, and what we've established is the building department includes in lot occupancy, pavers on the ground as part of lot occupancy. It's not a structure, but it's a paver, but they're including it. And they're also including decking that is ground level in the lot occupancy. Now, the reason for the decking and the pavers is so that when you walk the main walk, which is boardwalk or concrete, you're not tripping or stepping off or creating a liability issue. So a lot of the structures, as you can see in the photograph, are there as wood deck or pavers so that you can get to the pizzeria, you can get to the ice cream shop, you can get to all of the little shops that are running from the main Bayview Walk south going all the property.
I don't think that's...
Are there any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Russo. Anything further from the board? Mr. Russo, we can, we have a number of pieces of communication. Again, I don't intend to read them, I mean, I'd say in favor, we have them part of the record. We do intend to read through the record of the Chamber of Commerce and the Finns letter. My understanding is you could also read the St. Hill Farren document. And I say, I have them all, the each of the board members has them, and they're, they're part of the record. And I think in this instance, it is with the time of day, because you, you had paragraphs of what, um, what that letter, I'm gonna ask for the letter of the weight.
Then I, can I ask?
I will state that the board credit, my, my understanding is that the, the ferry companies stress the importance of this application and the business rebuild to the, to the economic livelihood of this community, and we certainly recognize that.
Then, it's my understanding, from everything that I've read, that your office has been kind enough to forward to us by email by as of noon today. There were not any negative comments being proffered by anyone who wrote in. Every comment or letters in support of the application is presented today the way I read them.
Yes.
Is that a fair assessment, apart from the Finns communication, which we will leave for the record, again, in addition to the Chamber of Commerce? Well, the Finns' comments and, and record letters are never in support of applications as they are in Fire Island. So we're in great company.
But you asked a question.
And I answered correctly. Thank you. So we'll have this, this recording read through.
This is from the Cherry Grove Chamber of Commerce dated February 23rd. We write in this letter in regard to the Grove Hotel, which suffered a total loss in a fire that occurred on March 27, 2015. We understand that obtaining permits to rebuild can be difficult and time-consuming. However, the Grove Hotel is a vital structure for the success of all Cherry Grove businesses. During the 2015 season, many businesses suffered directly as a result of this tragedy. Now, as another season quickly approaches, an empty lot exists where the hotel wants to minus the necessary currents to rebuild. The hotel is very important to the Chamber of Grove businesses and the community as we try to plan for future events to help make the habit of Cherry Grove flourish. Housing is a large problem when planning events and accommodations are extremely limited. Therefore, the Cherry Grove Chamber of Commerce informs that you please do everything in your power to fulfill the commitments or expedite any or all necessary permits to rebuild Grove Hotel. It will greatly benefit the community and continue to attract visitors to our, on claim as a premier destination on fire.
And just before Ms. Corry recently, the Finns' comment, I want to state for the record that I'm having a read of the active, like the short portion of it, there were many references to the federal statutes that I don't think at this point I need to spend reading to the record.
I agree with that.
Can you go to the board of the...
But we have, just for the record, we have received and read the document. We do not concur with the document. And as indicated, we are seeking to modify the document that the application presented to bring even greater conformity with the code standards at 54.7.
This is dated February 19th from the National Park Service, Fire Island National Seashore. Under the federal zoning standards, maximum lot occupancy for all development, residential or commercial, may not exceed 35%, and therefore, the National Park Service objects to the overdevelopment of this property. In addition, no use or structure within the seashore built in violation of a local ordinance when constructed may be reconstructed except in compliance with the approved local zoning ordinance. The lot coverage in the town of Brookhaven is 50% for all commercial buildings and structures on the property. The National Park Service encourages the reconstruction of this property to be environmentally sustainable with a lighter footprint on the land in order to conform to the federal zoning standards and the local zoning codes of the town of Brookhaven. If the town of Brookhaven determines that the property is a non-conforming use constructed in accord with the town of Brookhaven code and the federal regulations in effect at the time it was permitted for construction, then it may be reconstructed to its previous dimensions. If it is determined by the town of Brookhaven that the property in question was not legally constructed nor had required permits at the time of construction that complied with the town code, federal regulations would not allow reconstruction to its previous dimensions and would require that it be reconstructed to conform to current town code. The town of Brookhaven's current code is more restrictive than the federal regulations. Brookhaven town code limits the reconstruction of non-conforming structures destroyed by fire by storm. Under current Brookhaven code, if the loss is greater than 75% of the property's value, the property is to be reconstructed in accord with current zoning, which brings its property to 50% lot occupancy. Although not part of the federal zoning standards, the National Seashore is concerned about public health and safety within the boundary of Fire Island National Seashore, including structural and wildland fire resulting from development that lacks an adequate or proper fire protection and contamination of groundwater in the waters of the Great Towne Bay that can be affected by inadequate septic systems and sewage treatment systems. As the Brookhaven Board of Zoning Fields deliberates this application, we hope the board will also take into consideration the very real concerns regarding public health and safety and ensure that if this application is approved, the resulting development addresses the issues of fire, water, sewage, and other public health and safety issues. The National Park Service objects to the development as proposed because it enlarges the non-conforming structure which previously existed and dramatically exceeds lot occupancy requirements of the National Seashore and the town of Brookhaven. It is unclear whether the structure was legally built, a non-conforming structure. If it was a legal, non-conforming structure, it may be rebuilt to previous dimensions. However, as currently proposed, the building would be enlarged and other changes are proposed. These include a very minor reduction in lot occupancy, approximately 50 square feet, which is not enough to compensate for 91-plus percent in lot occupancy. As the board considers this application, the board should also look at the totality of this development, including the adjacent lots, Suffolk County Tax Map numbers 47, 34, 35, and 45. It is the understanding of the National Seashore that the Septic Leech Field for the development on Lot 46.1 is located on lots 34, 35, and 45. The vacant lot to the south, Lot 47, was included in the applicant's lot occupancy calculations. The town building department rejected this calculation. The National Seashore recommends that the vacant lot to the south and lots containing the Septic Leech Field be restricted for future development, and any development rights that may exist for these properties that might be held under separate titles should have their development rights removed so as to compensate for the overdevelopment of Lot 46.1. Thank you for your consideration of the National Park Service Fire Island National Seashore's comments.
All right. Did Mr. Russo, those are not a surprise to you, those comments. Did you want to respond to them?
Again, I'd point out, we've reduced the lot occupancy. He inaccurately states in the beginning of 35%. He references residential and commercial. And then he clarifies it further on in the letter, which indicates that it's 50%. We have now brought the lot occupancy, as we've attempted to do on other applications before this board, closer to conformity. We have brought it down to 54.7. I would also like to point out again that this particular structure and, and use is in the middle of the downtown commercial district. It's a highly trafficked area by people who access walking and with bicycles or with waves. There are no vehicles that drive through this particular area. And the population, as you can see from the photographs, is great. We also wanted to point out that we've had discussions with Councilman Neil Foley, who supports the application. And we have to, in order to proceed if this board grants the variances, file for a waiver of site plan from the town board, which we plan on doing. And the board grants regularly as matter of fact for the Cherry Grove Community Association. I applied and got the waiver for that, which is directly across the block, so we anticipate seeing happening in this instance. The other point I would just like to give you and I'll pass up, come back another day, get the originals back and have copies. There are articles that show you when I was referencing the international and national claim of this. There is the appearance of Carol Chan, who was there in September of 2013 with an article in the New York Times from September 1, 2013. Liza Minnelli and Alan Cummings were also there at this facility in the nightclub in the Ice Palace. So I'll pass these up for the board to review as part of an exhibit that shows you that this particular community, like Fire Island clients, is something that we need to rebuild and reconstruction in a way that's being proposed to ensure the economic viability of this particular community and this particular location. And I thank you for your time. I have nothing further at this time.
Mr. Russo, we have a number of speakers on this application. In the past, I have noticed that you, if they're speaking in conjunction with your application, would you like to ask them questions directly? If it's not your intention in the... If it's not your intention in this application, I would ask that you, Mr. Bush, take the front row of seating and take forward a time.
There may be only one person that I might wish to query, and that might be one of the members of the Underwood family. The rest of the individuals I have heard from and I gather that they're supporting, so I'll leave the survey in front of them and the tax map so that they can reference it in their discussion.
If that's what your reference is, I can call William L. Underwood Jr. up now.
That would be fine.
All right. I see that William B. Underwood is here also. Would you like me to?
That is another family member. I know questions of him, but if he wants to speak with the others or you want to call him up first, that would be fine, too.
All right. Then maybe we have William L. and William B. up.
I know, Mr. Chairman, that it's getting late in the day.
Very good to see you tonight.
Of course, we support the statements of this gentleman's fire. The circumstances, the impact that this fire has had upon the community, on the grocery store, which I own for over 50 years, grocery and real estate market, real estate store, and in short, is your location, people to stay when they come to visit Cherry Grove. Important aspect of the viability of the community is that it's a wonderful place to hopefully ride it prior to the fire, to the community being a general, to come and enjoy the area.
For the benefit of the board, also, individuals who are speaking.
For the support of the application that's been presented here today and support the testimony of the progress of Mr. Minnelli.
Thank you. Just for purposes of the record, both of the individuals to my left are attorneys, and therefore they do not need to be sworn in.
No, but for the record, I'd like them to indicate their name and address.
Sir, they can see you.
So for the record, we have your names and addresses. By hearing, it's not just what it should be.
That's okay.
My name is William L. Underwood Jr., 320 River Avenue, Patchogue, N1. And I've been in all property in Cherry Grove, particularly this particular part that referred to as the grocery store and the real estate market for over 50 years. The pride to us, mine with Cherry Grove, because when I was in a coal and fuel business, I used to supply coal to the original building for its ovens. So I have some community argument. And also, I'd like to mention that the property was originally developed by a family named Parkinson, Rulin, a few doors north of where I live on River Avenue and Patchogue. So I have some idea of the interest that we have in the community of Cherry Grove from the Underwood family.
Thank you. Sir, do you wish to provide us with an account? And just totally, you need an address, please.
William B. Underwood, 320 River Avenue, Patchogue. I second everything that my dad has said. I'm familiar with Cherry Grove since I was a little kid, going over and carrying pails of nails and paint for carpenters repairing properties. And I've lived in the apartment above the grocery store, directly across from the hotel, as a summer resident since 2003. I completely support the application.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Gentlemen, thank you very much for coming out. That being said, I'll take a seat back and you call all the members. Thank you. Then for the purposes of persons wishing to speak on the application, can we see Robbie Manuello Benello, Kenny Holcomb, Robert LaSage, or LaSage, and Christopher Whitnave?
One more?
Yes. Sir, how about Frank Bizzuto? Gentlemen, if you could remain standing, keep your attention to the scenario for this.
Read your writing.
Thank you, please have a seat. First person wishing to speak, pull up a microphone. Because of the hour of the day and the number of persons wishing to speak, we're going, I'm going to limit testimony to two minutes. If you have a written statement, I'd be happy to take it to the record. But let's start with, sir, with the, yes, your statement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to the board members for your time. I'm just going to read this statement that I prepared. All right. My name is Robbie Manuello, 370 Greenbelt Parkway, Holtsville. As I said, my name is Robbie Manuello. I'm a registered Republican and an active voter. I've lived in Suffolk all my life and have a seasonal rent in Cherry Grove for many years now. I'm privileged to be a bartender at the Ice Palace for over five years. You all will hear people talk and you will read letters on how this has affected the Grove Hotel immensely. I would like to take my time to discuss how it affects much more. This goes beyond our community, too, but not limited to, the ferry service, taxis, livery service, businesses on Main Street, and the Long Island Railroad. The Long Island Railroad alone stands to lose out on tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands, of potential dollars in just a season or two. One can only imagine what the small businesses are going through. The Grove Hotel has and will be a great international resort destination. I can tell you firsthand as a bartender, I've served people far from, but not limited to, New Zealand, South Africa, Israel, Ireland, Great Britain, Argentina, Brazil, Central America, and Canada, just to name a few countries. Spending our money wholly in the community is what most of us strive to do. Adding domestic tourism money is great. International tourism money, even better. Note that most international flights go to the city airports. So any money spent by tourists on, but not limited to, vending machines, newsstands, coffee shops, and once again, the Long Island Railroad, is a direct result of their final destination, the Grove Hotel. I would also like to mention, a couple of years back, a family from Ocean Beach was visiting for the day and got stranded in Cherry Grove. The weather took a turn for the worst and the Great South Bay became very choppy.
So I'm going to tell you, in two minutes, I'd rather you skip that story and if there was a final comment, I would agree on this.
Sure. Well, my final comment is, is if there was no Grove Hotel, that that family would have been stuck in Fire Island with no shelter and rain. In conclusion, you know, please help us, not only the immediate community, but Main Street, the Long Island Railroad, and beyond, by allowing Dr. Frank and Chairman Glory to rebuild this iconic, international resort destination. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Just, please start with your name and address.
I'm Rob LaSage, FIS, SNG, 31 West Avenue.
Sir, call that microphone directly in front of you with a stronger voice. Can you start a little bit?
Rob LaSage, 31st Avenue, Westbury, New York. I am the board manager, spouse, and visitor of the Cherry Grove for the last 21 years. I've had residence there for the last 10 and been employed until the last four seasons. Cherry Grove was, sorry, Cherry Grove Hotel was never more important or known than last summer after its loss. The economic impact upon the entire Cherry Grove community was very, very much apparent. The Cherry Grove Hotel is a driving economic force behind every single business in the community. It is a business that cements all other businesses in the community. With the loss of Cherry Grove Hotel, our community has lost the majority of its overnight and short-term housing. Even many people who are normally stay their night enjoy Cherry Grove, who turn the man in the same way. This has had a devastating effect on all businesses. The remaining overnight accommodations were booked solid for last year. Simply put, there was nowhere for people willing to spend the night at Cherry Grove to sleep. So in conclusion, I urge that the town of Brookhaven Board approve all permits, variances for the hotel.
We thank you for your comments. Your name and address, please.
My name is Chris Whitnave. I reside at 843 Gottling in Medford for the last four years. The reason I mention four years is because 25 years before that has been the town of Avalon and a certain number of appointed and elected positions within the town. When I look at the project that's before you tonight, I look at it in the same similar sort of fashion that many of you have to look at with regards to variances, setbacks, and things that will impact the community there. As a person who's been going to Cherry Grove now for 25 years, and I spent the early 80s there studying the southern forest directly to the west with the National Seashore, I can assure you, most of the buildings, most of the structures, including that 12-foot wall, were there in 1982 when I was there. Additionally, most of the other structures which are requiring variances and which require permits have grown over time. As the footprint for the establishment has grown and established itself within the community, the community is grown around it. The changes that are necessary with regards to the overall footprint, in my experience, tend to be minor with regard to the increases necessary to comply with current health, safety, fire code via building requirements as compared to the standards in 1959 and prior to that. In closing, I would like to say that I, as a Brookhaven resident now, was heartened a year ago when I saw the supervisor on national television saying that we have to rebuild this hotel. I hope that you will support supervisor remains efforts at that time and look forward to bringing this application in expeditions back.
Very good, sir. We thank you for your comments.
How you doing? My name is Frank Bizzuto. I live a tenant president street, Oakdale, New York. I've been a tenant at Cherry Grove Pizza for 22 years. I also own the ice cream store over there with Michael and Linda. Basically, I just want to reiterate what Mr. Lynch said, basically how vital the structure, it's a landmark structure of the Grove Hotel. It is very important to the economy. All of the businesses rely heavily on people coming to the beach, staying at the hotel, whether it's a couple of days, a weekend, a whole week. It is very, very important. We also have a very big problem with housing over there. The accommodations are very limited. And when you try and do certain events to bring in a lot of people, you need places for these people to stay. Without the hotel, we lost a few events last year. It hurt a lot of the businesses. And it is very, very important to get that building up and going quickly as possible. So I am in total approval of getting this job done. So it's in your hands now, and we just ask you to please go ahead and get all these permits and variances so we can get back onto our normal lives back at Cherry Grove.
Thank you, sir. Questions are coming to the board members. We thank you very much for coming out. Can we have the next four speakers, please? Darren Mandello, Linda Dantona, Susan Panzer, and if you are here, Kenny Holcomb.
He left.
I have noticed speakers of these last four individuals.
Read your writing, folks. Swear or firm testimony about skin.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much for coming out. The first person wishing to speak, just take a microphone and pull it directly in front of you, please. You have a letter. Go ahead. What was your name and address, please?
My name is Susan Panzer. My address is 80-35 Springfield Boulevard, Queens Village, New York. I also am a homeowner in Cherry Grove. My Cherry Grove address is 144 Doctor's Walk, 1 St. Walkway. It's called these days.
And what comment did you have first?
I've been going out to Fire Island for 30 years. Been spending my summers out in Cherry Grove for 30 years. I both work there and I also am a homeowner. I'm also a part of the community association, the arts project. And this year, a lot of events, like I think, sorry, Frank said, a lot of events had to get canceled. We've had fundraisers that had been canceled because there were no places to house artists that were coming over. It's so vital, and I saw during the week, you know, being there for 30 years, seeing the differences of what happens and the events that can go on, I'm captain of the volleyball team, and just seeing the effect that they not having the hotel, it was just devastating. It is such a vital part, it's such a part of history, it's part of everything that Cherry Grove is. And having that central hotel is so vital to the community and to the economy. I have a lot of friends who work out there. I'm a teacher, so I'm all fall summer. And I see what happened. I see the economic impact on it, just being as a resident all, I'm a current resident all summer. Thank you.
Thank you. So your name and address, please.
Hi, how you doing? Darren Mandello, 50B7, Brooklyn, New York. I've been going out to Fire Island, Cherry Grove for just about 15 years now. My very first summer out there was when I turned 21 years old. I consider the Grove Hotel my summer home because my friend there was a couple of years older than me, brought me out to the island for the very first time when I was 21 years old. And it was a place that I could be open and free to who I was as a person at 21 years old, first, you know, coming out to myself and, you know, finding myself and who I was. And when I got that phone call, I was getting ready for work at 7:00 in the morning, so 7:30, and my phone was, you know, ringing, ringing as I was in the shower. And when I got that phone call and my friend who had told, who took me out there when I was 21 years old and said, "Did you hear what happened? That there was a, you know, devastating fire that completely burned down the hotel?" I just bawled out crying because that was my summer home. From that first weekend out there, 21 years old, I've been out there every single summer. And I would say probably three weekends out of the month in June, July, and August, I would take off work, leave on Saturday after work, and stay in the hotel Saturday, Sunday, Monday. You know, I just hope that the whole board could approve this site to go up, to be built, so we could all enjoy that, you know? And people that are young can come there where I was first also introduced to go to the site, that I've seen all these performances. I was there for Muggo Cho, Sandra Bernhardt, Liza Minnelli, Helen Cumming, all these people came there, stayed there, and I saw all these great shows that, you know, was presented there. And if it wasn't for this hotel, I would not be able to do this because I would stay there constantly.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, I forgot one thing. As a homeowner, the hotel missing, there are a limit of the boats that go. There are people who get stuck on the island. When they get stuck, they wind up sleeping on the beach or sometimes go on property. Like, it is actually to our benefit to have a hotel. Because without that, we find, you know, people trying to do bad jobs and do other stuff on homes. So I know that there's a huge support by the homeowners for the hotel, for those purposes.
Thank you. Then your name and address, please.
Lieutenant Anna Connaught, 473 Hampton Court, Rogers, New York.
Would you like to tell us about the application?
Well, I've been going out to Cherry Grove for 46 years. And being, we don't have the hotel, it's really bad for us. I own part of the ice cream store with the fellow friend from the pizza place. And during the day, people come over and say, "Do you know where we could sleep tonight?" And a lot of people, the homeowners, are taking people in, which is not good. They don't know who they're taking in, they take these people in. We need the hotel. We need the hotel for a lot of reasons, to bring business and everything else. It's really, I'm there 46 years, and there's a big difference. And there's hardly nobody coming over anymore because there's nothing to do.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? We thank you each for coming out. Mr. Russo, I'd like to hear your concerns, please.
Mr. Chairman, as I indicated, I have nothing further to present at this time. I would only urge the board that, considering the fact that we run through the elements of 267B as the area variance relief, and as we discussed, all the intricacies of the application that you, in your due deliberation, can quickly make a determination in favor of the application that's presented, and or that we can proceed with all the other necessary applications at all the other levels of government. And I thank you for your time. We would like to get this, Mr. Russo, reconstructed, financed, et cetera.
Thank you, Mr. Russo. If there's nothing further from the board, allow this for motion.
Mr. Chairman, I need to approve the application as amendment, subject to, oh, you want?
This person, I think it was chapter 81 of the.
There were a number of reasons that have to, that go with that motion, maybe I'll have to, to the motion, ask for a motion, a close of hold, and we'll, we'll.
Very well. Thank you. Move to close of hold.
Thank you.
Take that motion to close of hold by Mr. Ferguson, second by Mr. Lindsay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any close motion, cameras, here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, I thought you almost had.
Case number 11, Independence Plaza, LLC, 3333 New Hyde Park Road. New Hyde Park property is located on Northwest Corn, Middle Country Road, our oil and gas center. Willow Road, Sullivan.